Okay, it's six o'clock. Chuck Porter, Chairman of Board of Public Works, calling this meeting to order. Roll call is the first item. Got Chairman Porter, I'm here. Member Clark Johnson.
Here.
David Wasnicki.
Here.
Member Jim Witt.
Here.
Member Ernest Timm.
Here.
Alderman Yusaf Hassan.
Here.
And also President is Highway Superintendent Schleeter.
Here.
Chief Mayor.
Here.
Assistant Chief Banky.
Yes, sir.
Here.
And Assistant Chief Anton.
Antoine.
Antoine, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Did I miss?
Me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm here.
Okay. All right, sorry about that. Recorder, Ken Skoransky is here. All right, also, it's been requested that we do our best to speak up so that they have good audio recording of this so that when they do the transcript or whatever, minutes, they can hear everything. Normally, when we're in the council chambers, the only person she can normally hear is me. So, I don't know if the other mics are not turned on or turned up the way they should be, but that was a request that was made. Next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it is.
Thank you. One thing I missed today is Tuesday, October 2nd, 2025. Again, it's Thursday. Right. We're here tonight. There's only one item on the agenda, well, two, but one item in particular, the emergency authorization contract, the contract releasing, relating to remediation of mold, City of Franklin Fire Station Number One, in lieu of the public bid process. Who is gonna do the presentation?
I could start out very quickly, if all set.
Okay.
Good evening to committee members. Appreciate very much you coming together on a short notice and for an extra meeting because I know everybody loves meetings, especially during the, I'll say summer, but it's actually fall. We want to explain a bit of a emergent situation that we have at our fire station number one, which is located on Drexel Avenue, right underneath the water tower at the intersection of Loomis Road. The fire station was built in 1980, so it's nearing forty-six years old. It was added on to in 1996. And when you drive past from the street, it looks great. I think about every morning I drive in, it's like, man, this place looks great from the outside. We have some, definitely some serious issues on the inside, however. We've had a lot of water intrusion through the brick on the outside of the building. I've got some pictures, I'll actually step to the side here a little bit so you can see. We've had noted a water intrusion for quite some time. And there's been a lot of remedies that have been attempted to curb the water intrusion. So, starting in, make sure I get the dates right, in 2022, there was a citywide building remediation or improvement process that we did some tuck pointing, focused mainly on the apparatus bay and a couple offices on the front face of the building. We actually had bricks that were falling out of the building. And it was kind of around this time that there started to be some suspicions that we had mold. And when we peeled back and looked underneath the wallpaper, which actually started to fail, also, the blinds for the windows actually fell down because of the water intrusion. And you can see clearly behind the, behind the wallpaper is black mold. So, the following budget year, an additional project with Johnson Controls to seal the outside shell of the building took place. And you can see when they opened up the, the brick around the windows where a lot of the leakage is noted, there is a hodgepodge of a lot of different types of bricks. There was different types of ceiling above the windows. And bottom line is, we've got a lot of intrusion of water, both in the front of the building and the administrative offices, the east side where the living area and the kitchen is. I should point out, this is our headquarters station. So, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year, there's a crew of five firefighter paramedics that are there all the time, twenty-four seven. Monday through Friday, the administrative staff, which consists of myself, the two Assistant Chiefs and Administrative Assistant, we're there Monday through Friday. So, there is constantly people occupying the building. And that's part of the reason why we're here talking with you tonight. So, go ahead, yep.
He's leaving out too that that's also where we have all our CPR classes and everything else. The public walks right through that, through that front door there, sees this and walks through.
No, very good, we do have a lot of visitors, being that it is our headquarters station. So, realizing that we, as we kind of peel back layers of this onion, as of the term I've been using the past few weeks, the seriousness of the mold issue seems to expand and expand. You talk to members of the department that have been around fifteen-plus years, there was evidence of mold in kind of the kitchen area for many, you know, for probably a decade ago that was kind of covered up and concealed in the walls and never really dealt with. And knowing that this would obviously take funding to repair, we did get funded for this budget year, fifty thousand dollars. We had requested seventy-eight thousand to redo windows, do the mold remediation. We were funded for fifty thousand of the request. Part of it was utilized to contract with a company called TerraCon Environmental, who is going to be our representative for the project because we have employees who are in the building and we are not really mold or industrial hygienist experts. At the recommendation of the city engineer, we contracted with TerraCon Consultants to have a third-party representative to make sure the mold remediation and the whole process is done correctly so that our employees are healthy and able to work in that environment. They came in and did some testing, I believe it was in 2021. We did do a mold test in 2021. TerraCon followed up and did some testing just recently, I think it was August.
The test that they did is we wanted to make sure in addition to the mold, they didn't do a mold test because they could see the mold. What they wanted to do is they, because we knew we had to get work done, they wanted to do a asbestos test as well. So, whoever we get the contract with that does the work for us, we want to make sure that they're dual certified to deal with asbestos as well. Fortunately, the only place that there was asbestos was in the floor tile. Now, in 2021, we did have a air quality test on. The way, and again, just the way it was explained to me is that in Chief's office, when the spores are, it's just like forty percent, that kind of raises a flag. When a number is at a hundred, they have to deal with it. In 2021, in Chief's office, it was at two hundred and eighty. So, a hundred and eighty over the red flag mark. And, I mean, I can only imagine, because windows still leak, it's, I can only imagine it's gotten worse.
So, that's exactly, that's a good segue to what brings us in front of you tonight, is we are at a point where we are now starting to get some complaints from employees who are citing health issues that when they leave the environment, for instance, our Administrative Assistant, her office is actually the one that's pictured here, that has the most damage and the most visible mold. We had accommodated her, she was complaining of sinus issues, respiratory issues. We moved her to a different fire station and she reported a marked improvement in her symptoms. So, that's why we're in front of you. We've got a couple of other employees who have started to cite some issues and it's really necessary for the city to take action as quickly as possible. We would, we are requesting from your committee to declare that emergency declaration. We have got bids in hand that we're getting updated right now and we would like to move forward as quickly as possible. One of the vendors indicated they could start work within a week's period. And the other thing is we're kind of racing the weather as well, that we'd like to get started on this project as soon as possible.
Before you take pictures, and it's kind of ironic in this here, this picture here, this is, this was actually after a rain. This water line here, that is, her office coming in from the window, that's water. It's coming from that area. And that's the whole purpose of why we put that tuck in, just to, it was kind of, kind of got to be an inside joke, for lack of better terms, but just to show you how much seepage there is.
Questionnaire.
Yes, sir.
In this process, whatever work you're proposing, is it replacing brick as well?
Uh, no. So, the, actually, Bob, do you want to handle that one?
Yeah. What we need to do is, the way we put it out to bid is, honestly, we don't know what to expect.
Until you open it up.
Until we open it up. We told the, all the contractors to start on the front offices and on the east wall because we know for sure that's where it's at. And they can't do any type of water test or anything like that until they open everything up. So, the plan is to get it opened up, get as much mold out of there as they can and do a water test before we start to reconstruct because we're just putting a band-aid on the problem if we don't fix what's, where the water intrusion is from. Now, I can tell you, these windows, again, I'm gonna achieve a little leniency, I'll back up a little bit. This station, when it was built, it was built when Franklin became Fire Department and they were Monday through Friday, eight to four. It was not originally a twenty-four hour fire department. I'm not saying it was right or wrong, but back in the day, there's pictures, historical pictures of our guys actually making the dorm room, making the kitchen. So, I don't know what type of codes were followed, if they were followed right at the time. I'm assuming they were to be in a public building, but I just don't know. So, just so you kind of know how the inside of that building was done, and I think, I know dating you, Ken, but I think you were around there at that time too, is that a fair statement? But, we always, through the past years, tried to be respectful of the budget. We tried to do the best we could and now, you know, we got residential windows in there that probably shouldn't be out, they're all leaking for the most part in front of the original part of the building as well. So, we know that those are gonna have to get replaced as well. If we do it right, it's a pretty significant cost. I hope I answered the question.
With your, with your brick though, the brick has been replaced above each one of these windows already. So.
Brick has been replaced?
It has. So, in this picture, you'll see, so they started over our bay.
That's what I'm saying.
Right? So, they started over our bays where the trucks drive out. And then after that, they fixed over the windows.
They've all been replaced.
Yes, that's all been replaced, but there has been no water test yet to ensure that there's no further leaking because can't open the walls.
Are you gonna replace them? In your thought process, are you gonna replace the windows?
Well, we're gonna, wherever the water comes in, that's what we're gonna look at. I mean, I would hope that that's in the plan, but it all depends on the city.
So, yeah, I can comment on that. The first step, the mold remediation is the point we're at now. For 2026 in our capital budget, we pressed it an additional fifty thousand for rebuilding with windows and interior.
Real quick, I would like to at least let for the record, whoever is asking the questions, state their names so that they know in the minutes they can say Jim Witt, looking, asked the question, you know, you know what I'm saying, just for.
Want that in?
No, not necessarily, but for the recording, you know. Just so we don't get into too much of a big chat here, you know, they made their presentation, now we're in the question and answer discussion part of it. Who else said it? I mean, I saw hands go up.
I do.
Okay. Okay, no, go ahead.
This is Ken. So, my understanding, you've hired a consultant. Have they narrowed a scope repairs for this? Or are they stating that they need to open things up to define a scope for the project?
We have a scope of, I guess, starting in the, the scope is the start of front offices on the east wall, the kitchen wall there, that's, that's the scope. And to go, I forgot what the footage is, but they have to go so many feet past mold. And then, but we don't know what they're gonna find.
So, this is a building envelope problem. I mean, it could be coming in the roof, the coping, be leaching through the block. There could be inadequate insulation, that's usually how that mold generated. If there's not flashing, internal flashing of those windows, it's gonna.
They did add flashing when they restored the zone. So, there is better flashing around there.
Okay.
And they did fix.
And the windows that they fixed, they're not leaking anymore? You have no mold above them?
No, they're there.
Well, we've never removed the mold that's currently there.
Oh, okay.
So, we've never done the remediation to figure out if now what they did is fixed. And that's the part we're at. So, we gotta remediate, all right, take out all the drywall and everything, and then do our water test. And then that's gonna tell us what we need to do further, if there's any further.
And they might be going, my experience with water tests is done with the finished wall, under pressure to see how much permeates into the window, brick, et cetera. That's kind of confusing that they would do it with all. But TerraCon might have different means and methods to what they're trying to do. Has the mold been tested for what type it is?
It was, yeah, yeah, it hasn't.
In 2021, it was. Yeah, there was an air quality test done in Chief's office and our Administrator's office. Those are the two that they concentrated on.
And again, I had to ask what the numbers meant if you're gonna copy these. But I was told that this was the black mold and that that was at two hundred and eighty. They were concerned at a hundred, it was reading at two eighty when thirteen was.
Thank you.
The other thing too, you asked about, is it still leaking in water tests? I will answer yes. So. Yeah.
By the kitchen, for sure.
These two, these two windows are AC Antoine's office. There's a entrance door.
I'll try the video, I got the video.
Oh, yeah, there's the video. So, this is on already, you can kind of see. It's out of the view.
So, that's the only window we can visually see is currently still leaking.
Certainly not disputing this. Definitely does. Done in expenditures. Just had questions.
And that's kind of, no, 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 we're not taking it that way. And I understand, I'm not, it's just, my problem is buildings and grounds is, I always kid around, I'm the guy that my dad had hired someone to do stuff. I don't, you know, we're trying, we want it done right, it's just what is right, so.
Yep.
And that's why we have to.
Consultants should define that scope once they do some exploration.
Yeah, my name's Ernie Timm. I did want to kind of go through, make sure I understand. So, the, you had fifty thousand reserved for doing remediation this year. You have the funds, but you want a authorization essentially, a single source, just a vendor. This is the reason for this meeting, instead of having multiple quotes.
And we have three quotes, but we still, by, it's my understanding that once, once the, once the quotes are out there, then it has to sit so long, you know, common counsel has to approve it and then it has to sit so long for public inputs. And that could take us, that could potentially take us to the end of the year versus if we could speed that up, we could have someone alter next week.
Do you expect the funds that you already have, budgeted, to be sufficient?
That's a hard one to answer, that is a very hard one to answer because, I mean, I've been there the longest and this is where Chief Key kind of gives me the look. But I really think every wall on the interior of the original part of that building.
So, then, that's the reason for your declaration here is that in case it goes over budget, it can be used in emergency and continuing spending, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the angles. And we've spoken to the city administrator and the finance director and they have the understanding that if we start to open up and it starts to get bigger or the project starts to get bigger than what we thought it was, which that's part of the reason we really want to get going is to see what we're dealing with and the only way to know that is to start opening. There is the ability to have contingency funding added to the project. Because the other part of this that we hadn't mentioned is obviously being a fire department, that station serves a major portion of the northwestern part of the city and we can't just necessarily pull everybody out of there because our response times for emergencies would be so much longer if we moved people to our satellite stations. So, as fire chief, I'm really carefully balancing the continuity of service, continuing service versus the health and safety of our firefighters and our employees. That, we've got quotes and we've, we're ready to pull the trigger on temporary housing. If we start to open this up and it can't be mediated, or excuse me, it can't be remediated very quickly, we've got quotes and we're ready to pull the trigger on temporary housing to move all of our people out to a job site trailer until this can, until it can be made a healthy environment. So, that's some of the, some of the urgency that we have with bringing this to you at a special meeting.
Does anybody else have any question? The other question that I have, this is not a new problem, you've been testing things for several years. And it looks like that leak has been an ongoing problem also for a considerable number of cases. I'm surprised that it wasn't addressed before it got to extreme degree that it currently is. Is there a reason why it wasn't?
I can speak to that a little bit is, as, as Ken had mentioned, we would bring in different specialists and I joined the department in twenty, the year 2020 and we would bring in specialists to say, hey, we've got this leak problem. And just as Ken said, they identified that, hey, this is a problem with the envelope of the building. So, they started working on the brick and they said, well, it doesn't make sense to rip apart the inside until we can seal the exterior envelope. So, we've been through two rounds of tuck pointing, brickwork, roof experts, different theories coming in. I think it's, and it seems like it's, it has helped that it's pretty well sealed up, but holy cow, the calendar, we're two years into this already. And you talk to the mold experts and it's mold and places of employment are a little bit ambiguous. You know, some people tell you, hey, as long as it's encapsulated within the walls, you know, for a normal eight-hour employee day, you're probably, you know, pretty good. Our employees are there for twenty-four hours at a time. So, it's kind of Pandora's box that we were following these experts' advice, trying to get the brickwork done, get it sealed up and not opening up that Pandora's box. But with so much time that's gone by and start having employees starting to report health problems, we definitely can't kick this can down the road any further.
No, absolutely. And especially breathing ailments, especially dealing with firefighters who have to go on respirators from time to time to go into buildings and things like that. You can't afford to have somebody compromised as far as their ability to breathe. Does anybody else here have any other questions? Okay.
I'm Clark Johnson, I.
Thank you.
The question I have is on the three bids that you have, are they close, are they similar? Who sent the bids out? And I have to go along with Chuck and I'm a retired government employee. I, and a director, and like you, I wouldn't have stood for three years of not having this done. Look at the position that you're in now and we are.
Agreed, yep.
And I guess I just don't want to say, hey, it's all okay.
Yep.
How much is it gonna be?
Well, the one.
Because I don't see that anywhere.
Right. We did, we did meet with three consultants or three, three companies. It was Kelman Restoration, Paul Davis, and what was the third one?
First and second.
Yep. So, we do have three, three bids, they are competitive, they're pretty close to one another. However, as the timing goes, you know, a bid is only good for thirty days, sixty days.
Who's gonna make the decision?
That would, that would be our department.
Our department through TerraCon.
Through TerraCon, yep.
So, TerraCon is the general contractor?
They're our representative. Well, they kind of, we run the bids past, we run the bids past them and they, they kind of give us a recommendation based off the industry standard.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Sorry, yeah. So, I mean, the one quote here, and again, this was, they came through yesterday and I remember, I'm looking at it just for, the estimate price to above reference restoration scope is presented not to exceed eleven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. That was just the mitigation.
Remediation.
Yeah, yeah, so that doesn't.
For the mold.
That doesn't count for any. Putting back together, if anything's destroyed, it has to get replaced, that type.
Doesn't count for windows or all the unforeseen, all the unforeseen circumstances.
And you have fifty thousand dollars?
We, we, our budget was fifty, the contract with the environmental consultant was just over eight thousand. We're at about forty-two thousand balance for the project so far and the three bids that came in were right around that price range.
Eleven. So, you're gonna be way under the fifty thousand dollars for completion of the project.
We.
The mitigation part.
The mitigation.
Okay, then what's next after that?
Stopping the leaks, which, which I really feel that they're gonna have the windows that are gonna need to be replaced and if we get the proper windows, industrial windows that'll last, I want to say that was close to almost twenty if I'm not mistaken, something like that.
Yeah, our, our original requests from the city was seventy-eight thousand and that included new, all new windows and anticipating new windows.
So, have you bid out the windows?
We had, we found one company that actually got back to us and that was last, well, when all these bids went out, we were anticipating.
Yeah, because I would imagine you'd want to see what the finished product's gonna be.
Correct, correct. So, I, I don't have that number in front of me, I didn't know we were gonna go in fire Saturday.
To be, to be very clear though, the emergency declaration that we're proposing tonight is strictly for the mold remediation, to make it, to make the environment safe and healthy. Anything beyond that would have to go into normal, through the normal bidding process. This is just a mold remediation.
So.
Well, thank you, because that I didn't find clear.
Yeah, I didn't either, so thank you for that. Thank you for your question. I, I was under the impression that this emergency declaration was gonna cover not only the remediation but the reconstruction to make the building basically sound and ready for.
A finished product.
To get a finished product. You know, if, all we're talking here is.
But now, like they said, if you read it, reads, you know, see spot, run, 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 run. Remediation of mold.
Yeah, it's, it's probably clear, more clearly on the actual resolution. At the top and the bottom, it, it states remediation, remediation of mold.
So, then we're not just basically signing a blank check for all of a sudden a quarter million dollars of building reconstruction.
You are correct, yep. Yeah, it's strictly for the remediation and the, the resolution does indicate the budget appropriation of fifty thousand dollars in the capital budget. So, it, it links it to that project that's already, already approved by the city and already funded.
We'll be rolling over.
Can I make a motion then?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the emergency authorization to A for the fire department to proceed.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Clark Johnson made the motion, David, or Ken Skoransky seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor.
Is that a glued, finished total project?
No, just, it says just the remediation of mold, as, as stated on two A.
And then they have to come back and.
My, my philosophy, just so you're aware, is every time I do a project, I do my best to get three quotes to match, to compare, so we're doing apples to apples. That's why even, when these guys came out to do their quotes, I had them just come back out this week because I didn't feel it was fair because we didn't know that they were bidding on apples to apples. So, I want to be fair across the board. So, once we get those total numbers and if we have to come back, you will have those figures in front of you.
Your motion is just the remediation, but that's not the complete product.
That's correct.
So, now that we have that.
As stated by the chief.
Yeah.
But they're authorized to spend up to fifty thousand dollars on doing what they can.
And that's what's been in the budget.
That is correct, yep. Corrected. Correct. And Assistant Chief Antoine also pointed out that for the two thousand and twenty-six budget. We do have an additional appropriation available for, um, contingency depending upon what we find. And then also for the actual rebuilding process, which will be a separate, a separate bid.
Which could be finished a project for next year for six, uh, budget.
Right, depending, yep, correct.
Okay, all the questions have been answered? Then, uh, we have a motion seconded, asked all, answered all the questions. All those in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, the ayes have it.
Chuck, you need to read in the. You had a top line, the resolution declaring.
The, the very, very top, the state. Okay, resolution number, okay. A resolution declaring public emergency related to remediation of mold at the city of Franklin Fire Station number one. Pardon me?
No, go ahead.
And then do you want me to read the, the, at the bottom, the bottom couple of paragraphs just so we know it? So it's in?
Yeah, you may want to read in there also.
Okay. Whereas funds for the necessary remediation are available through the two thousand and twenty-five capital budget appropriation of fifty thousand dollars. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Public Works Commission of the City of Franklin. The remediation of mold at Fire Station number one creates a public emergency that requires immediate remediation. Without compliance with the Wisconsin State Statute number, whatever, sixty-two point one five. And sixty-six point zero nine zero one. Be it further resolved that the proper city officials are authorized and directed. Waive bidding requirements for the necessary remediation and instead to enter a contract. A purchase order to a competent contractor for the necessary remediation. Be it finally resolved that this resolution shall remain in effect. Until the common council of the city of Franklin determines by majority vote that the emergency no longer. Exists pursuant to state statute sixty-two point one five, whatever. Uh, so passed and adopted at this special meeting of the Board of Public Works, the city of Franklin. On this second day of October, two thousand and twenty-five. Okay? All right. So.
Yep, um, Fire Chief James Mayer.
Assistant Chief, Chief Antoine.
Assistant Chief Robert Mackey.
Thank you.
All right, then we're, we're good with this item? All right, we have one more item on here and scheduled for the next meeting, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And I believe that'll probably be in the council chamber. Um, so we don't need a motion for that, do we? And then we need a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
So moved, Clark Johnson and seconded by Alderman. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, it's been, motion, motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.